Okay. Called meeting orders, five fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Five fifteen, according to my brother.
Kyle Rhodes, here. Philip Patrick. Robert Babcock.
Here.
Russell Reed. Shane Morris.
Here.
I remember two's presentation of the annual financial audit. I'm in the car.
I'm gonna let know that we are ready.
Huh?
I'm gonna let know we're ready.
Oh, okay.
You often turn around if you want to.
One minute, I'll be watching.
Well, it's not George.
Good.
Come on, it's been a big reason.
I was forced to watch it two times.
It's just Jay.
I never wanted to see it.
Hey, Jay, this is for us. We are ready. Yes, sir, you weren't connected, but now you're not. There it went, two participants just kicked in. Are you talking to me or Pat? Okay, because it still shows two participants. It just went to one again.
Does Pat have children?
Yes.
I thought he did.
Some, one sits in Indiana, one's in Florida, and I think the third one is in Tulsa.
I was thinking that, he told me once, that he didn't get to see any of them too often. And Buddy has two or three.
I am now connected. I don't see them, I just see his name.
Do you need to see them? Hang on a second. Oh, you can't hear me. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna turn down.
I can't see you, but I can hear you. Okay, okay. You don't see me?
Yes, sir, we are.
Oh, I see the top of your head.
Pretty shiny, wasn't it?
There, you kind of see us.
Oh, sure.
I kind of got waved in there. All right. Well, good to see you on Friday afternoon. Are you ready for me?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to get started then. This is gonna be your audit for the 2021-22 year. I'm gonna...
You're fine, just keep going.
States give the report tonight. And I'm gonna tell you that I'm slowing down a little bit. We're gonna separate what we do. I'm gonna let Jay and Bill take over the audit part. And I'm gonna still go ahead and do your estimate needs or your financial area for you. But they opened up a new company. It's gonna be S and B CPAs and Associates, P L L C. Jay's been with me for 11 years, and Bill's been with me for over two years. I feel real comfortable with what they do and how they do it. But after 53 years, I'm gonna slow down a little bit. I'm still around, I'm still answering questions, I'm still here to do what I can to be helpful. But I'm looking at separating it out a little bit, letting me have a chance to do something else. But that's my plan. It's a, you decide if that's what you want to do. But that's my plan for it right now. They are the first firm to be put on to the list for state auditor in 20 years. In 1998 or 99, there were 72 firms that did what I do. They're 20 now. And two of the firms on the list aren't gonna do it next year. So it's getting smaller all the time. I'm just, I feel pleased to find some people that want to come and do it. Because for a number of years, I've tried to find someone who had to do it. And it was too hard for me to compete with everybody that was doing oil and gas. And being able to go home at 5:30 and have week-long vacations all the time. I've found some people that do that real work. And like I said, they trained for several years, and I feel real comfortable with it. Right now, let you see Jay, and he'll give your audit report.
After me, if you'll turn to page four of your audit report. We'll go through. This is the first of two opinion letters. District reports on a regulatory basis, accounting required by the state of Oklahoma. It's a modified cash basis. When your revenues are recorded, when you receive them, your expenditures are recorded when the board approves them or when they're incurred. This is a very conservative method of accounting of the capital. It's an unqualified opinion from the state of Oklahoma. For the federal government, it's an adverse opinion because it's not in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. It's a qualified opinion because we do not show the general fixed assets groups. We expense those items, we buy them, there's no reason to set them up, it depreciates because we don't bill tax return. We turn to exhibit A. We show the cash and cash equivalents for each fund. Your general fund, your special revenue debt, home, account, projects, and trust and agency. The special revenues, your building fund, your child nutrition fund, and the trust and agencies, your activity fund. We also show the warrants payable under reserves for recoveries for each fund, and the fund balances. The other side is only in the general fund, those are what we use for the general operations of the school. Turn to exhibit B. This is the income statement for your chief of our fund. We show the local, the revenues collected from local, intermediate, state, federal. We show the expenses, these are the operational expenses for the school. Down below, we show the ending fund balance. Next page is exhibit C. This is a budget to actual for each one of your funds. It's the same as exhibit B, where we're showing the beginning budget and the ending budget. There was no supplements during the year. If there'd been any supplements, the board would have had to approve those supplements that could be expended. And page seven is your notes to financial statement. That goes to page 15. Tells you a lot about your school district, if you haven't read them, you need to. Just gives you a lot of description about your funds. Producer of funds, basis of accounting, budget. You'll turn to page 11. We show your lease purchases. What is for the roof repairs and renovations. It pays off in November of 26. The next one is for the air conditioning system, and it pays off in the 26th, 27 year. On page 14, we talk about employee retirement system. These are contingent signs, if somebody would ask, what's your contingent liability? This would be it for your employee retirement system. On page 15, right towards, about a third of the way down, the funds that were paid on behalf of the teachers and employees for the 22, 21, and 20 year. The next page is schedule A1. This is a balance sheet for your special revenue funds off of exhibit A. It breaks down the building fund and the child nutrition fund, shows your cash balances, works payables, and fund balances. The next page is the schedule B1. This is your income statement for your special revenue fund, breaks down off of exhibit A, oh, I see, exhibit B. It shows your revenues, your expenditures, and the fund balances. And they'll show transfer into the child nutrition fund, that's from the activity fund, child nutrition. Next page is schedule C1. This is a budget to actual for the building fund and the child nutrition fund. Next page is schedule D1. These are your activity funds. Over to the left, we list each project. The sponsors are responsible for the funds in these, in the each project. They have to record the revenue, turn it into the activity fund, custodian on a timely basis, and the custodian has to deposit it in daily advances. Then they have to do the POs. The board approves how those funds are to be spent. Then they have to re-receive an itemized invoice, sign it, and account for those goods. This is the highest risk area we have because they generally cash. There's $93,000 worth of revenue, and $90,000 worth of expenditures. Like I said, it's the highest risk, and we stress this because if funds disappear, the sponsor's gonna have to repay that, the teacher, because the school didn't receive it, the kids are not gonna repay it. It's not the school's responsibility, it's gonna be that teacher's responsibility, who are doing it to protect them. The next page shows our depository balances to books. Next page is our scheduled expenditures and federal awards. Over to the left, we list out to each program. Beginning here, we had $59,000 to receive. We received it $315,000, expended $251,000. And we still, we had funds to receive in several of the programs. Your Title I, and your IDOB, and then COVID. Then we have funds down below to be expended in the child nutrition funds over the next year. The next page is our second opinion letter. This is where we look at everything else, and look at your payroll, and read your board minutes, your teacher's retirement. Look at your POs and your expenditures, talk to people, make sure they know what they're doing. We turn to page 19. We've had one finding during the year, eight of 79 activity fund requisitions were dated after the invoice, indicating that good services were approved, and 79 invoices were not signed. These were generally on credit cards. We recommend purchases be approved with, purchase order acquisition required, the items we wore, and accompanied by a signed itemized invoice. Last year, we had a finding, where the activity fund not reconciling, and receipts not deposited, that was corrected during the year. Are there any questions? If not, I will turn it back to Pat.
Thank you all. I'll tell you, it's been a good journey. Been here with my father, my brother and I, we've been with your school district a long time. We've enjoyed the time we've been there. We appreciate your assistance, and things we've gone over, and things we've asked you to look at. And like I said, it's, this has not been a really easy decision to do, but at some point in time, I had to make it. But we appreciated your efforts and your time, and the time that you put in as your district, you've done a good job with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep, thank you.
All right. I'm having my face go away.
What we do now is accept audit, is that right?
Yes, let's accept the audit, we accept the audit.
I'll make that motion, move.
I'll second it. Morris?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Don't need to sign anything before we go. Get it signed now, or we sign it again.
Yeah, we'll just sign it.
If we sign it now, then he can take it with him. That way you don't come back from today.
We need the stamp.
Stamp.
Hey, where the greens at?
Well, some of it is the superintendent already signed, but, yep.
Take it over.
Yes, sir. The half of it, anyway. He's still gonna do the estimate needs on all your clients.
How old is Pat?
Seventy-two, seventy-three?
He's just a pup.
Everybody's doing, Buddy was here for, he's the one I've been up until, what, two years ago, I guess, maybe? Yeah. Yeah, he left about the time I came on the scene.
His wife got sick.
Yes, and she, she passed.
Oh, did she? I did not know that.
Oh, we gotta have some fun?
Do you have cancer?
For yourself, yes.
And Pat's not sick, is he?
Nope, likely were. He's just done.
No feeling, he's just done.
Well, you have some amazing treatments out there, cancer right now.
They do.
I just had it, and they use proton therapy.
We, we had another, we had another accounting firm approach us in December, and the gentleman wanted us to just, just to take over my clientele and take care of them. And after we got done with the meeting, I kind of looked around, and looked at Pat, he's a friend of Pat's, and said, something wrong, something wrong, he's just giving us the accounting firm. No, 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 everything's fine. Well, he was asked not to tell us. A couple weeks later, he told us, hey, I've been told I can tell you, he's got cancer, and it's moved up into his brain. He passed away here about three weeks ago. So Pat is having to do, his name is Jerry, he's having to do Jerry's audits for '22, like here, finish that, finish him out, and then Jay and I will take them all over for next year. And Optima was, is one of them also that we, that Jerry did, so we'll work through. Bad deal, but that's, we don't, we take care of them, so, yeah, find a way.
Did you get a bigger one?
That's as big as I got. It's water.
It's Route 44, that's the biggest they go.
Route 66?
I don't think they have a 66 now, Ted.
They don't, they don't. You have to drive on that.
You have to drive on that one. And it's pretty rough. It's a lot of cement, and the, and the joints are a little off now, after a hundred years.
I want to make that trip sometime soon.
Last place I ever went driving on that thing was...
We can go on and do whatever we need to, and then we'll step up when it gets, I mean, I can get here, so we'll go ahead.
She's right there. Get off I-40, then Cherokee trailer, so it's gonna pull that hill.
Yep.
I hear it pulling, yeah, it's gonna have a gnawing hill to come off of. You know, that concrete, it's up, lift up like that, so everything runs right down the highway, it'd be slick.
And at night, you can hardly see, can hardly see the center line, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't wide either, you know? You hit a bump, and it's probably gonna throw you back across the road.
Try driving a 80 model international two-ton. The governor, up and down like 10 mile an hour before we got to the top of it.
And they put that bypass in there, you don't have to go down that, you gotta hang back around, you know?
I lived down in the city for about 10 years. I've been up down that road many turns.
You want to make a copy of it in a year? I would make a copy of this because...
All right, well, I remember three then, which is to put out the consent agenda. The following items are routine nature, normally approved at board meetings, will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, approval of following items, A through H. I have no question. I'll make the motion. We'll approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Yeah, Babcock? Morris?
Yes. On file, is more discussion of possible action to enter into executive session to discuss the following items. Discussion appointment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, for education motivated salary offer to our employees, according to Department of Statute 25, Section 307b1. Make a motion going to executive session at 5:39. Yep.
Second.
Second.
Do you wait?
Yeah, apparently.
You want me to say my name or anything? Okay.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes, item seven is executive session compliance announcements. Only thing we're discussing is an item saying that votes taken. Item eight is more discussion of possible action on contract, contract with Becky Castor for speech pathologist for fiscal year 24.
Becky's been with us several years, and we have to have one, so I would make the recommendation that we hire or approve the contract for Becky Castor or speech pathologist.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes, item nine is more discussion of possible action on hiring a teacher for fiscal year 2024.
I make the recommendation that we hire Christie Shepherd as an elementary teacher for '23, '24.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes, more discussion of possible action on waiting for your contract.
Is there one in here for everyone?
No, ma'am, I should have made more copies of it. Can you let me make a couple copies of it real quick, so that each one can read over it, or?
An extra copy so everybody can read it all.
Yeah.
Show your contract.
Pretty much. We changed it a little bit, because I don't want lots of kids in there that don't have an adult with them. We added an age to that. We don't want any little biddies in there at all. I don't care if they got two parents in there, I don't want the little ones in there.
I like that. I like that.
Price alright?
Huh?
The price alright?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah, that's fair, and if it gets warmer, we, if it's nicer, there's a lot more stuff in there, we need to do something different, great, I don't, that's cheap, but that's...
That's pretty cheap.
Hell, but I think people will use it here.
And we are looking for some more equipment.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Yep, I'm good. I'll make the motion, we approve that contract.
Second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Item 11, board discussion of possible action to approve staff to travel to Innovative School Conference in June 2023.
I make that recommendation, we're paying for it with that 515 money, so it's great money.
Sound good?
Can you make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Item 12 is board discussion of possible action to approve stipend of $1,000 for staff attending initiative, school conference in June 2023.
It will also be paid with 515 money, so I make that recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
It's pretty many.
I don't know, I think it'll work pretty perfectly.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Item 13 is more discussion of possible action to reschedule June 2023 to June 8, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
So we can go to the conference.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morse?
Yes.
Item fourteen is board discussion of possible action to accept any resignations.
We have.
Oh, yeah. Dear Miss Burgess, I would like to notify you that I am resigning from my position as principal teacher counselor for Freedom Public Schools effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you very much for the opportunity you've given me to serve this, to serve in this school community. I have enjoyed my time in Freedom Schools and have been blessed to build some great relationships with all here. June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three will be my last day in education. As I retire from education, it will begin a new chapter in my life. Sincerely, Ms. Yosa Shula. You will be missed.
Yes, Ms. Shula, thank you for your time, but. Glad you were here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I make the recommendation that we approve the, make that for resignation.
I make the motion we accept your resignation. I'll second.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Babcock?
Yes.
Morse?
Yes.
Item fifteen is new business.
I have none.
Item sixteen, board to sign any documents as needed. Listen, if we got to sign.
No, I think that's, just given, that's all I have to sign?
Yes.